All right, we will call the meeting to order 5:30. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will move on to roll call.
Councilmember Hall is absent. Councilmember Mazzoni?
Here.
Councilmember Palafini?
Here.
Councilmember Tavallaro?
Here.
Mayor Parham?
Present.
I make a motion to excuse Bob.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number three, the acceptance of agenda urgency items.
I will move to make a motion to remove item A on business and item A on the closed session.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on now to non-agenda public comments, now actually may be taken by the council on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any non-agenda public comment tonight? Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Richard Dentist and it's 34 Main Street. I'm the executive director, current executive director for the Chamber of Commerce, and good evening, council. I just want to say thank you for all the support you've given us for the last four and a half to five years since I have been the executive director. It's really been a pleasure working with the city, and you've always been very helpful when we've come to put our events together, and the staff has been extremely helpful too when we've had our carnival and other events that have happened, and I just want to thank you for that. It's been a great pleasure to work with you. Also too, we have Chinese auction coming up on Saturday. It's going to be flashback to the 90s. I don't know what that is because I'm still wearing what I wore in the 90s, so hopefully you can come as you are. It should be pretty good. We had some donors this year that were pretty fair, and I'm probably not as good as last year, but I think it's going to be as good, it should be as fun. So, we're hoping you can get your tickets if you haven't gotten them, and we have them there at the cabin if you so call to want to come down and get them. And again, just thank you so much. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
We have any other non-agenda public comment tonight? All right, seeing as there is none, we'll move on to council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments, and start with council member Tavallaro.
I don't have anything.
Okay, council member Mazzoni?
The only thing I'd say was, I was at, they had the museum dinner party the last weekend, and it was, had a good turnout, and the food was excellent, so they did a really good job on that. Everybody worked together, and if you didn't show up or missed it, you missed a good feast. So, thank you guys for everything, and hopefully they have some money to put away to get some of those issues solved down there, but thank you.
Mayor Proton, Palafini?
Just a couple. I just want to make an announcement that Family Fun Day is occurring on 4/20, April 20th, from 10 to 2, up at the Bel Air Park. Last year, we had roughly 1,000 kids, so hopefully more this year. It's free to everyone that attends, so there's no charges for anything. I do have invites out to the police department, but I think you may be busy and the fire department, and if you can't do that, that's, it's a busy weekend, so it's okay. I also like to advise everybody here that we have kind of worked with the county, our city manager and the county, and we designed a little bit of a roadmap to utilize the building plans from the county, which have been a little, I don't know, hard to come, hard to get a hold of, but now I think we're right on the right track, so that's it.
All right, well, I'd like to echo the sentiment for the Family Fun Day. I've tended myself several years, I think it's a great event, appreciate that's being put on again this year, and in regards to the housing plans, would highly encourage everyone, not just in our community, but our surrounding areas of influence, to consider using those as it could help you to save a lot of costs and expedite rebuilding or building a new home. And that's all I have.
I would also add to that is they are also designed for ADUs, additional living units or, what do they call it?
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling units, thank you. Too many initials. So you can put them in as a second home, anyway.
All right, we will move on now to the next item, which is presentation and proclamations. Our first item is the proclamation recognizing the 100-year anniversary of the Order Sons of Daughters of Italy and America, Weed Lodge Number 1269. I'll read the proclamation to you. Given honor to the 100th anniversary of the Order Sons and Daughters of Italy and America, Weed Lodge Number 1269, whereas the Seori Unity Lodge Number 1269, Order Sons of Italy and America, was instituted in Weed, California, on January 6, 1924, the third large, uh, third lodge in California, and whereas the Lodge Gloria Number 1503 of Weed was instituted by Seori Unity on July 1, 1928, and merged with the Seori Unity on May 23, 1987, under the name Weed Lodge Number 1269. And whereas in June 1950, Weed Lodge Number 1269 purchased land through interest-free loans from members, this is where the Weed Sons Memorial Hall stands today. And whereas the Weed Lodge Number 1269 opened the Weed Sons Memorial Hall for Interstate 5 travelers stranded by winter storms and is designated an evacuation center. And whereas the Weed Sons Memorial Hall is utilized by all community organizations for fundraisers, raising thousands of dollars for local clubs and organizations, social events, and is the designated polling location for Weed citizens. And whereas in its 100-year operation, the Weed Lodge Number 1269 has donated thousands of dollars in the form of scholarships to graduating seniors of Weed High School, the Grand Lodge Youth Program, Shastive Estates Nursing Home, and the Winemus Cemetery Association, as well as several other organizations. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Weed does hereby honor the 100th anniversary of the Order Sons and Daughters of Italy and America, Weed Lodge Number 1269, and proclaims April 13, 2024, Weed Lodge Number 1269 Day. The City Council of the City of Weed takes great pride in celebrating this anniversary with the lodge. We express our sincere congratulations on this anniversary, and thank you for your commitment to our community, citizens, and youth.
Are we all committed? Yeah.
The mayor should do it, right?
County mayor is president.
A lot of last names are in the I and O.
I have to say, on behalf of the lodge, Sons and Daughters of Weed Lodge, we thank you, and from a granddaughter, another family member, we thank you. Thank you.
So I'd also like to end that proclamation with the announcement that there will be a dinner hosted at Sons of Italy that night, Sons and Daughters of Italy, and highly encourage everyone in our community to attend and support them, as they have supported our community for this last 100 years. All right, our next item of business is a proclamation recognizing April is Child Abuse Prevention Month and Week of the Young Child.
Karen's here, and Marlene? Hey, guys.
I'm the foster case manager down at the family. Watson, I'm the executive director for Child Abuse Prevention Council, which is also any of you know, we're so grateful to Ken for being a board member of the district community resource collaboration for at least a decade, if not more, and then our friend Susan, who was key. So grateful to Weed for being such a supportive organization. Awareness Month, but every day is that awareness month. Acting the proclamation and living by it. Proclamation on a daily basis because we know. Have some packets of information for you, we'd love to share. There's all kinds of, please share with others. And then, who said yes to the flag? Somebody, I think, was that you? It was you. We just want to thank you. You were the first yes to having the child abuse prevention flag flown during April Child Abuse Prevention Month, and here's, here's the message. So, we all know that when we protect, help, listen, 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 and care about people in our community, including children, we're less likely to have the kinds of trajectories that some children have in our community. So thank you for caring, thank you for taking small steps every day to make life better, not just for the children in our community, but for the seniors and those that are least lovable in our communities. So thank you so much. Okay, thank you. And we'd love a picture, you know, sometime, it doesn't have to...
He's going to read the proclamation.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Thanks, Craig, I appreciate that.
All right, and recognizing April 2024, the Siskiyou Child Abuse Prevention Council Collaboration Proclamation, whereas to become healthy adults, all children deserve to live in safe, stable, and nurturing homes and communities, whereas children are vital to Siskiyou County's prosperity and future success, whereas the people of Siskiyou County believe in the celebration of life, inclusion, and hope through our children, and deplore and condemn acts of violence committed upon the children of our communities, whereas the lives of children who have been hurt or lost to child abuse are honored by studying their stories in order to prevent future abuse and protect the innocence, health, and lives of our county's children, whereas child abuse, rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our society, whereas child abuse, neglect, and sexual assault prevention is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future generations, whereas research has shown the enormous impact that positive parenting practices have on a child's social, emotional, and intellectual development and future success, whereas communities understand the importance of prevention and support for the well-being of citizens thrive and prosper, whereas effective child abuse and sexual assault prevention succeed because of partnerships among citizens and all sectors of the county, whereas April is the month to focus public attention on the needs of all children and prevention of sexual assault, whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing child abuse and sexual violence in Siskiyou County. Therefore, we hereby proclaim April's Child Abuse Prevention and Sexual Assault Awareness Month, as well as April 6 through 12, 2024, as Week of the Young Child. We call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening families in the communities in which we live.
Thank you. I just, you also have one, thank you so much. You also have another amazing person from your community, Carla Charraga, who couldn't be here today, but we partner with Siskiyou Domestic Violence and Crisis Center to also remember the, that we do have power in sexual assault prevention in our communities. So thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. And should we leave this flag here? Perfect. Thanks a lot.
Oh, did we want to do a picture? Do we want, do we want to do a picture? Karen, did you want to do a picture up in front?
With the flag?
With the flag.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I think I'll, this is as much exercise as I've had all day, so it's okay. You don't want to go? Come on, come on.
We got the whole crew coming down. Yeah, we got the whole crew.
unloaded them all. It'll speed up the rest of it.
Thank you very much.
That's true. I can go anywhere I want, boss.
I am going to go too, but I asked Sandy because it was a fundraiser.
All right, we will now continue on to the consent agenda, and our first item, by motion, approve city council minutes and work session and regular meeting minutes. Actually, we're just going to approve the entire consent agenda here, sorry.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And items removed from consent?
Nothing.
We have none, and we will start with our first public hearing. So our first public hearing will be the possible state CDBG application. By motion, council will consider resolution number 11-2024, approving the submittal of an application for funding under the State Community Development Block Grant Program and hear community input on projects. The City of Weed anticipates applying during the 2023 and 2024 CDBG program years. The City of Weed has or anticipates receiving approximately $580,000 in CDBG program income.
Hi, I'm Brandy Caparasso. I work with Great Northern Services. I'm the community development manager. If you guys are wondering where Larry and Sita are, they have retired, and Rod is mostly retired, and I'm taking over their, all their positions. And so, this is part of the process of applying for the community development block grants, is that we have to have a public hearing, and it doesn't necessarily need to be in front of the city council, but here we are. And so, I'll just read from my notes here. So we're, the purpose of the hearing is to review the community development block grant, or CDBG eligible activities, and collect residents' views on housing and community development needs. The eligible activities, not necessarily for one of these, which we'll get into, includes public services, public infrastructure and facilities, housing rehabilitation, economic development, and several similar odds and ends, but that basically covers what we can apply for funding for. So what I'll go through is the amount of funds available and range of activities that may be undertaken, and I'll go through that below. Little later, information on the proposed projects and the estimated amounts of funds that we plan on applying for, for low income and, low and moderate income individual, households, people, areas. Within the public hearing, we, we need to say what we're, how we're going to displace persons. None of the funding that we're going to be applying for, or we plan on applying for, will displace any persons. So that may be, like, if you displace a person, so if you're doing a large housing project or you have to tear a building down for some reason, that might displace people, the program can actually assist in moving those individuals to some, some other location. There's also, it says records regarding the past use of CDBG funds. The City of Weed has used CDBG funds for 30 years. So what's currently we're doing, which will be in another meeting when we're closing them out, is installing stu, installing new state-required water meters, preparing the environmental assessment, acquiring permits and easements, and drafting plans and specification to address Bowles Creek stormwater issues from Repon Way to Main Street, south of East Lake Street. That is almost complete, and then replacing the water lines along East Lincoln, Broadway, Roseburg Parkway, et cetera, and then replacing some sewer lines as well. And that is currently, we're in the process of still doing that. So that's what we've done, that's what we're doing currently. What we propose, there's two NOFAs, or Notice of Funding Availability, coming out. The first one is out now, and that's for the 2023 amended NOFA. There's approximately $19 million that opened for applications on March 1st, and it closes on April 30th. The awards are based on a first come, first served basis, or until the funds run out, until the funds run out or the application period closes. Right now, we don't know if HCD, HCD, there have been applications submitted, we don't know if their funds have been expended yet, they haven't told us. The total requested grant amount that a jurisdiction can apply for is 3.3 million. We plan, the city plans on applying for 1.8 million, and that's what's in the resolution. For this application, only public works jobs or public facilities with some housing, we'll just go with public works and public facilities. That's the only application that we can apply for at this time. We can't apply for public services or housing rehab, housing rehabilitation, or economic Great Northern is working with the staff and city engineer to submit a pavement overlay project for Lincoln Heights area, and that is because of the fire, and the destruction of the streets over there. And if there's any questions just on the 2023, I'll go through the 2024 NOFA. If there's any questions having to do from the public or the city council, I can take those questions, or if anybody has any suggestions, this is also an opportunity to make suggestions on what the residents would think that they would like to see the city apply for.
Do we have OES money to do some of these, Lincoln Crestmore Railroad?
On the, on the OES funds, we have no commitment from OES, and they were not going to do a complete overlays, they were going to do patches where it actually burned on the street itself, so.
So that would be no?
Yes. And, and part of the reason for this application is mostly engineering's already done over there, because we've been out and surveyed and did different things, and then on South Davis, the environmental's already been done, because we did that on the water bypass project. So these are projects that can get pushed through really fast and not have to go through a full environmental.
Because they're shovel-ready?
Correct.
Beyond shovel-ready? Okay.
Or close to it, anyway.
Yeah, they're, they're close to it. Yeah, we'll probably submit in about mid-April. If we don't get the, if for some reason it's not funded through this round, we'll go ahead and go through the 2024 application, and I'll go through that a little bit.
What's the minimum that you could end up getting? The maximum and the minimum?
The minimum is however much you apply for.
So we can apply for 19 million?
No, 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 no. 3.3 million is the, the maximum for this round is 3.3 million. Can't, can't apply for any more than that.
Okay.
And you can only, for this round of applications, you can only submit one application.
Okay.
When you, when you say one application, are we regarding one particular type, like just streets?
One, yeah, one project. So no matter what that project is, you can submit one application for one project.
Gotcha.
And it could be paving 27 streets?
Yes.
Is one project?
Yes, yeah. If it's all within that one scope of work, yeah. You couldn't do, say, we want to rehab, you know, a public facility and do streets. That's kind of a, it's kind of a stretch for a scope of work.
All right. Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay. So for the 2024 NOFA, that's expected to be released in July. The official amount hasn't been released, but in the past, it's been about $30 million available to jurisdictions throughout the state, and it'll probably be a little higher, I think it's 36, but I'm not quite sure. The application period will open 30 days after the NOFA is released. All CDBG eligible activities will be accepted. The city can apply for a maximum of two over-the-counter projects, which are public works, facilities, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, and economic development, and one competitive grant, which is a planning or public services grant, or one OTC grant and two competitive grants, and that total is going to be up to 3.6 million. That's what they're telling us now. Things can change. They're, they've just held their public hearing, the state just held their public hearing on this, so they have to go through a public hearing process as well as the jurisdictions. You do have 580,000 in public program income. It's going to be used in the 2024 round. It cannot be used for planning and technical assistance projects, and it can't be used for public services, and unfortunately, it cannot also be used for government facilities where government business takes place. So if it's a government-owned building where the public, its main use is for public, then it can be, we can, you can use it for that. So like, the city of Etna is going to be using it for a renovation to their museum, which they own, but it's run by a nonprofit, because city business does not take place there. The staff and city engineers are discussing a planning grant for environmental assessment engineering plans and specifications for curb, gutter, sidewalk for the Lincoln Heights area, and like I said before, if the paving project is not approved in the 2023 application round, that will be wrapped into this one. We don't have a budget for that yet, because we haven't started it, and once we do have the budget and the NOFA opens, we'll go ahead and have a resolution before the city council to approve that. The city is also planning on submitting an application for the Bowles Creek Stormwater Project that's currently in planning, that's wrapping up, so that'll be completely shovel-ready by the time that, that NOFA comes out and that application, and we don't have a budget for that yet, just because it's, we're not quite at that stage. And again, this is a time for, if anybody wants to ask any questions or have an idea of what they would like to see funds used for, or the city apply for?
I have upgrades. I, I know the museum has issues, and I do believe we own the museum building. We have just purchased the library building, and when I drove by it the other day, it needs a little bit of attention, signi, not significant dollars, but at least it'll be a potential start somewhere.
That's what we were talking about prior to the meeting of exactly, and she explained it a few moments ago. of exactly, and she explained it a few moments ago. I was really hoping it could be utilized for this building, but this is where government business is at. Unfortunately, it doesn't qualify, so she spoke the bad news to us.
Yeah, and so, you know, that's, with the program income, we can submit a separate, a separate application. And since it's, it's, it's quite a large sum of money, you can either put it, you know, if you have a really large project that you, you know, and if you're only going to submit one project, and it's 3.6 million, but it, you know, and it's a little bit more than that, it's close to 4 million, you're like, well, we really need extra funds, then you can put that program income in it. You can combine their program income with your regular funding, or you can do a separate, complete separate application, or two applications to use your program income separately without grant funds. So that may be, and that can be done at any time. And this would be covered under the public hearing, so we wouldn't need a public hearing. If we needed to do that, we would need to come back with a resolution with the project scope and, and the amount for the app, those applications. There's a complete separate, separate application process, but it's sort of the same.
And one other example potentially, I don't know if it qualifies. So it has to be owned by the city?
No.
No?
No, no.
We need stuff at the community center?
Generator?
Not only that, but I mean, there's some landscaping, there's paving, maybe? I don't know. I don't know if you can mix that one, but anyway. The pool is also another one that is owned by the city, and I'm not sure of all those upgrades. I would think that the community center could make a list.
Can you guys, can you do, like, blight properties or slum areas?
Yes. There is, so you have to meet several national objectives. So one national objective is to assist low, moderate-income people. And this is the, down here at the bottom, is, is the income limits for 2023, and they go up, they pretty much go up every year. Or in a specific area. And so that's generally what we're doing for the public infrastructure projects, is because all of we, is determined to be a low, moderate-income area. Another way that you can meet national objectives is to eliminate slum and blight. There is very specific requirements for that, and it's generally very hard to do. If we're really interested in that, we can talk to HCD about that. Another way around doing the slum and blight is to, if it's an economic development area, we can assist with economic development grants and, or economic development infrastructure. And then the third way to meet a national objective is urgent need, which, just, we don't go there. HCD will not even entertain that national objective. They have a hard time with that one, so.
So it looks like we have some work to do.
All right, we'll see. This is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
Anybody?
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, as there is no resolution here, we will close this public hearing for item A, and we'll move on to the public hearing for item B.
Nope.
Oh, we do have a resolution, okay. I don't have that here.
Resolution 11, 2024?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 11, 2024, a resolution approving, turn my mic on, a resolution approving an application for funding and execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the 2023 and/or 2024 funding year of the state CDBG program.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Resolution carries. Okay, now we will close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Public hearing per Weed Municipal Code 6.13.070. Council will consider Resolution Number 12-2024 for the revocation of special animal permit for Jenny Houston at 615 Shasta Avenue. We'll begin with the staff report.
Okay, so to, I'll lay a little bit of background foundation before I have Community Service Officer Vanda Walker step in as to the current events. City Council adopted Chapter 6.13, specifically 6.13010, Other Animals Prohibited in 2011, stating that animals other than household should not be allowed in the city without special animal permit. In 2017, conditions for chickens were established by then, not the current city manager, but the previous city manager, limiting to eight female fowl and no male fowl, particularly roosters. That was adopted in July of 2017 by council. April of 2020, residents at 615 Shasta Avenue was determined to have a fowl at the time without a permit. No permit was obtained, a citation was issued. That citation was taken to administrative hearing in August of 2020. In this room, a hearing officer heard the case from the resident Jenny Houston, who had obtained a permit in the meantime from the citation to the hearing. Although the city staff had proved that the violation occurred, the hearing officer at the time found in the findings an order, the appellant seems to already do so as she has obtained a permit since the citation was issued accordingly in the interest of justice and to give the appellant an incentive to continue to comply with the city's permit requirements. In the future, the citation will be dismissed at that time. On the permit which you've been provided, it states you are not to have any male fowl per the Municipal Code 2017, adopted resolution. She completed that, stating she would not have roosters, and signed it when she obtained that permit. I will jump forward now and turn over to Community Service Officer Vanda Walker as to the current events of the last several months.
All right. So on January 16th, myself and Community Service Officer Coats were out at a neighboring property, 633 Shasta Avenue, for an unrelated public nuisance. While we were there, we heard a rooster, and the residents of 633 were able to tell us that it belonged to the residents at 615. On the following day, the 17th, I attempted to contact Ms. Houston for another unrelated abandoned vehicle in the back alleyway. I was able to hear the rooster at that time. When I later went that day to meet her at her place of work, at Pilot, I informed her that I had heard a rooster multiple times at the location, and that it was a violation of her special animal permit and that it may be revoked if it remained. She said that she didn't want to speak about it, and that she would not be removing the rooster at that time. Later date, I believe it was January 23rd, I was back in the alleyway on patrol, and I saw a chicken out in the alleyway. I was able to return it to the residents at 615 Shasta, and I was able to take two pictures of two separate roosters in the rear of the property.
That's where we're at today. That's why we've requested, with the confirmation of two roosters at the property in violation of the animal permit, we've asked to revoke the permit at this time. I'll turn it over to Ms. Houston.
Okay, that one rooster is my neighbor's rooster. That was, not the rooster, that chicken.
Direct your comments forward, please.
Excuse me?
Direct your comments to us.
The rooster, or the chicken that he's talking about in the alley was my neighbor's chicken. He was not there because he was in Medford having baby issues with a new baby. And that chicken was, has been just roaming in and out of the alley and has joined my flock, actually. So, but she goes home every night. As far as the roosters go, to be honest, I've had a rooster for three years. I bought pullets from Tractor Supply in 2020, in about May or June, and they were all supposed to be hens. He turned out to be a rooster. And he was, he's the father of the three roosters that I had on property. I've gotten rid of two at this point, the two speckled ones. I have one left. He's my pet. I've gone around, and I believe you received a letter today from Kathy Besk. I have some other submissions I'd like to make right now. This is a picture of our, of my area. House. And in the last little nights, I've. Okay. That's an aerial view of our area. My house is in the red. All the red, the white dots are all the homes that I've gone to in my area. Now, in some of these writings, it says 300 feet. I've gone to all those 15 homes, on the hill and on my street. Nobody has had a complaint. I have a signature here, if you'd like to take this, ma'am. And I also have another letter from a lady, from someone on my street. Those are the names and signatures of people on my street, next door to me, people that I've gone to. They didn't even know that I had roosters. Some of them don't even hear them. They don't care, they like the sound. And so tonight, being here, I would respectfully ask that maybe this ordinance needs to be changed and considered on a case-by-case basis. And as you can see on the aerial view, those are all the homes around me. Nobody cares, they like the sound. One rooster is not going to be, and I have a neighbor here that has been having problems also. He has chickens, and the officers are always driving up and down our alley, and it just seems to be kind of a harassment. I had a rooster for three years. He happened, and I just did not get rid of him. Nobody complained. Nobody complained. He's my pet. And I think that that ordinance needs to be changed and revisited. I'm sorry, because John has been an ex-student of mine, a close family friend, and I'm sorry, Jonathan, for all this. But, you know, we live in a rural little area. I'm up on the hill by the high schools. Nothing but's up against my property. It's a blank hill, and all those houses that I have white dots are around me. I went to every single one, got to meet a lot of my neighbors that I, I've never met, which was a wonderful thing. But nobody cares, and they like it, and they enjoy it. You read those letters. I almost, I was going to bring my rooster with me tonight to show you. His name is Handsome. He's a beautiful boy. He was hatched in my coop. My hens don't know how to hatch hens. They always, I've only had roosters. But I did rehouse two of the roosters. If you absolutely demand and will not nicely reconsider this, I will rehouse him. But I would prefer to keep him, and nobody in my neighborhood seems to care. In this post here on the revocation, it says, "Animal permit granted in accordance, blah, blah, blah. If any of the conditions or terms of such permit are violated or if the following findings are made, the continuance of the permit would be detrimental to the health, safety, morale, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such use, or would be injurious or detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city." Nobody cares. Not going to be a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Officer Ryan?
I just wanted to confirm you were, that you were okay leaving those documents with the city?
I am, yeah. You bet. I have the, the original from Carol Orcut. I, I made copies for them, but this is the original letter.
I have, can I ask questions?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, is that okay? Okay. When you got the permit, were you aware that roosters weren't allowed?
Yeah.
Okay. I am probably one of the only council members sitting here that remembers the chicken debacle that took us three months. Were you there, Sue?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The resolution after three or four meetings of hours, literally hours, worse than cats, was the fact that we came up with this resolution to make the city acceptable to having chickens in certain yards. One of them was getting approval from all your neighbors.
Okay.
Second one was no roosters. We limited the amount of chickens, and we did that so that we had consistency and we could apply things evenly and fairly. And my heart goes out to you for a pet, because I, I mean, I know that hurts. But if you were aware of the, of the permit requirements and the administrator, in my mind, also, the administrative judge made those same kind of recommendations. If we make, in my view, if we make an exception, again, where do we stop the exception?
On a case-to-case basis.
I don't want, I personally don't want to entertain that on a case-to-case basis.
Okay.
But that's just me speaking. The other council members have their own choices, but I, I am, I just wanted to point that out to the council members that weren't here, is that it took forever to come up with something that we felt everybody could live with. Now to make exceptions to that just makes it one more step. We have to have, involve our community officers, possibly the police. An administrative judge costs us several hundred dollars every time we have to go entertain one of those guys.
To do what?
To, to have a hearing. What is, what is our administrative judge's charges?
Well, just a retainer is $200, and then to, to zoom in, the time to set up the cameras, everything. It, it ends up, for, for that fee to be waived, that cost the city $300 easily.
Okay, so, so all those little things kind of play into, like I said, my heart reaches out to you. I, I don't have an issue with that. I mean, I really, I have pets. They've all died but one, but anyway. But that's just my view. I don't know.
So are there, may I, if I can ask, are there other rooster issues in the city? Up, up in our area, or?
I, I believe those are handled on a complaint basis or when they're discovered?
I can speak to that. So going back to 2011, there were chicken and rooster issues. There's one residence that's no longer with us because of the Bowles fire, that had roosters in particular, and it was a cultural thing. Where I come from, that's a normal thing. We were getting complaints about crowing. We were getting complaints about how they were kept. They were humanely kept, but in some people's eyes, they were not, because they were tethered. It's completely humane. That being said, the animal permit came about because of that neighborhood. I remember, it wasn't about roosters at the time, it was about a horse in somebody's yard. I've got, just this week, and, and I want to throw this out there. I'm, at the, at the direction of the council, my community service officers were told to step up public nuisance abatement. They are not harassing people. I've heard that 50 times in the last month from different people. Just this week, I signed 12 public nuisance letters just regarding vehicles. So they're not harassing one person in particular. They're doing what council has asked them to do. Okay, so getting back to the roosters. So getting back to the roosters. The reason in 2017 that we established this was because the special permits were taking up so much time, because we were having to have a hearing with public comment and all the neighbors to come in for each chicken permit. So the easiest way to do it was to set a standard for everybody. That is why then, the then, not this current city manager, but the then sort of city manager recommended eight with no roosters. That was the same thing that Warriga did, I believe. So that is why it was established that way. So for council, you, this can be changed. But again, you're, you're teetering on going back to having a chicken hearing every time you have a special animal permit. Just this week, I had to tell somebody to get rid of the pigs in their backyard.
I remember that. I forgot about the pigs, the horses, and the other request.
There's another house.
Different pig.
Yeah.
Different pig. But again, and I, it's nothing against you and your rooster in particular.
I understand that.
It is a matter of consistency for our constituents all over the city.
But nobody cares in my area. No, in that whole area.
I understand that, but it's, one thing leads to the next.
I'll add, two of the people that she's mentioned tonight also were in violation of the rooster ordinance and to our knowledge have gotten rid of their roosters.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to see if anyone else has questions, and then if the appellate is complete, is finished, then she can sit down and we can do public comment.
We have other council member questions.
And then ask for information from the chief at the end.
The only thing I'll say is that I completely do sympathize with you. I do. I have pets. I love them. I understand where you're coming from. And my side that loves animals and pets would say it's okay, but my side is a city councilperson that needs to go by the laws and the rules. I'm sorry, says that you signed that. And I actually was working when this all happened. I was a CISO officer too, so I went around with it and around with it. And at that particular time, there was just, everybody had, everybody had roosters. And I'm sorry, I, I have to go with what, what I think is the best thing to do, and that is to follow the rules that you signed and that was set aside.
Well, it's not, it's not a nuisance to the people around us. But I will rehouse him. I'll keep my chickens, and I will rehouse him. He'll be gone.
Is it a, is it a comfort animal?
Yeah, in a way it is. In a way he is. I know. I mean, I don't have a doctor, I don't have a doctor notice or anything. I'm a very stressful job, and that's my place to come when I'm peaceful. So.
Do we have any other questions from the council? Okay, we'd like to open this up for public comment.
My name is Robert Shelton, and I live on the corner of 687 Shasta Avenue. Some of you might probably know who I am. The, this bird has not bothered anybody in our neighborhood. There has been no negative externalities produced by this woman's pet rooster. There is no complaints. The rooster hasn't injured anyone, it hasn't attacked anyone that I know of, and roosters can be aggressive on occasion. This is, as she says, a comfort pet. Now, perhaps we can sort of just, you know, set a situation here where she can keep the animal until it is deceased, and then she would agree not to have another rooster. But since there is a complete absence of complaint, I get up early in the morning. I'm usually up by 4:30 in the morning, because I, it's almost my bedtime. But I have rarely, if ever, heard the bird. And I walk through the alley, and I've never been accosted by the bird or never heard the bird. Seems to me that we need to possibly consider that a pet could take just about any form. You know, you could fall in love with an animal that is a rooster, a goat, I suppose. Perhaps the people that had pigs thought of them as pets. I don't know. But it seems to me that we might want to just step back a little bit and consider whether or not this is a bit of overreach. I've said my piece.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on the matter?
So we can actually take some action now?
If there is no further public comment, we will.
I mean...
There he is.
If you wanted to hear additional information from the chief, you know, that's, that's at the pleasure of the council.
Do we have any additional information from staff?
No, that's, that's the basis of why we're here tonight. I'm not, it's not my place to say anything beyond that. It's for you to decide. I would just, again, the reason why we are here with the chickens was to avoid chicken hearings, and we're back having chicken hearings, so.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has about the standards that you're applying.
Do you have questions?
Well, there was a, there was a comment that you needed to find a detriment to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare in order to revoke the permit, and that's, that's, that's not true. If you find that the terms of the permit were violated, that in and of itself is sufficient to revoke. But Weed Municipal Code 6.13.070 also provides the ability to revoke a permit, even if it hasn't been violated, if the council were to find that continuing the permit would be detrimental to health, safety. So, so, so that is not a necessary finding. All you have to find is that the permit was violated in order to revoke it. Meaning that...
She didn't have to get rid of all the chickens.
Meaning that she had more than eight females, or she had a rooster. If you find that was in fact true, then that would be sufficient grounds to revoke. That's all.
We can, in other words, what he's saying is we can revoke the whole thing. We can revoke just, we can just make sure that she gets rid of the rooster, or can we split, split it that way?
No, what I'm saying is that you could revoke the entire permit.
Right.
Just because she violated one part of it.
Or we could also say that she just gets rid of the rooster.
I think you would have that discretion. But I mean, the other, the other, the other option is if you revoke the entire permit, then she has to apply for a new permit and get a new permit, and that permit is going to be for eight chickens and no roosters. So at that point...
Well, that's the first...
At that point, the, the city would confirm that's, that's the case, and then she would get a new permit. So it's the same, I mean, it's kind of the same thing in the end.
Same thing. I, I don't see why we need to involve more city staff on something like that. But I, I would like to make a motion that we request the removal of the rooster, and then you could continue your permit. That's, that's, that's the summation of that. Doesn't need to be any more complicated.
Is there a term, a time period?
As far as removing the rooster?
Can I interject here?
90 days.
Yeah, I would give her some time, because roosters can be difficult to rehome. And she's not getting complaints from the neighbors at this time, so I think a little bit of time is going to be needed. I don't know if she has anything set up, but I do know, I have chickens myself. Roosters are difficult to find somebody that wants one not as a pot item. So, you know, to put it in a pot. So I'd give her a little bit of time.
120 days?
Well, no, 90, 90 days should be sufficient. But I'm just saying, it, it can be difficult to find somebody that wants the rooster as a rooster.
How about a year? Help, give me a year. Give me 12 months. Come on.
Five years.
Five years, yeah. He won't be around in five years.
What's that?
120 days.
I don't know anything about chickens, other than you.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
Are we making an amendment, or?
Yeah, I'm making an amendment. That we can allow in 120 days to take care of getting rid of the rooster.
I will. I will rehome it in 120 days.
Okay.
So...
I'll do, I'll go there.
And get some more fertilized eggs.
Take, take them up on it, because they're more generous than I am.
Are you seconding it?
Yeah, I second it. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll second it.
The amended motion?
Yes.
So we have a motion that's been amended and seconded. I, I will say this. I mean, this, I've spoken in behalf of proponents before to previous councils for special animal permits. And I remember the chicken fiasco, and I've also dealt with, as a homeowner and a business owner, issues with the stray cats and things like that. My comment would simply be that if we don't follow our laws and our rules and we willfully and acknowledgingly ignore those that we sign onto, then we put ourselves as a community in a position where people could potentially go beyond. And I'm not trying to say that a rooster is as egregious as someone driving, you know, through town at 100 miles an hour or, you know, thinking it's okay to have block parties because the neighbors are okay with it. But at the end of the day, we do, when we agree to follow the rules and ordinances of our city, we, we need to uphold those. And so we have a motion that's been amended and seconded, and I'll ask for a vote on the motion to ask for removal of the rooster within 120 days. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we will ask that staff follow up on that at 120 days to ensure that that has been completed. All right, and we will close this public hearing now that we have voted on the...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Now we're on to regular business?
All right, now we're on to the next item, which is council business. The only item left on the agenda for this council business is Human Resources by motion. Council will consider the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 473-2024, authorizing amendment to the contract between the city and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so this is just the second reading of the ordinance that will amend the contract with CalPERS to allow for the death benefit. Under CalPERS rules, they want us to have an ordinance to, to make a contract change. Normally, we would just do this by motion or resolution. And they also specify that the second reading and adoption has to be on the regular business and not on consent. And so that is why we are here. This was previously introduced at the last meeting, and all of the required disclosures were made at that time with respect to anticipated costs and whatnot. So at this point, we would just, if you have any questions for staff, they're available, public comment, and then you can...
We'd just have to make a motion?
Yeah, you ready to go, Joe?
To approve.
Yeah, after the public comment and everything.
Yeah. Do you have any questions in regard to the second reading?
Our public left.
Do we have any public comment?
We got two publics there. Pulled. It's being modified. But, but welcome, anyway.
Hang on. I, I move to, on the second reading and the adoption of ordinance number 473-2024. Do you want me to read the rest, David?
You actually, you should read the title of the ordinance.
Authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Is that the...
Amen.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll make a, oh, she made the motion? And I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to, oh, we got to do staff reports?
Yes.
Sorry. I was ready to go to close.
Yep.
Get you guys all off the hook.
Our next, next item on the agenda is staff reports, and we'll start with Chief Duncan.
Did he explain it to you?
I was late getting here, and further down, I thought, oh, I have time. So I was like, because we like that question, so.
Next month.
And after last year, I was like, oh, good. Steve's going to be so happy to...
Put on your calendar for next month. Be on time, though.
Walk her to her car, Richard.
All right. Director Porterfield.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Director Sharp?
I just want to give you an update on our Wakefield project, where we put in the water line and stuff over there that we plan on trying to pave, not next week, but the following week, and get that all buttoned up. And now that the weather's cooperating, I hope to have somebody on the roof this next week to give us an estimate and remedy.
Oh, for leaks.
And then we'll come back with an estimate and RFP.
We gave them buckets, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief Mayberry?
I have nothing. I think I've spoken enough tonight on that.
You've had enough?
All right. And our city clerk?
No report.
And councillor?
No report, thank you.
No, wow, it's a...
Well, almost.
On to our city manager.
Yeah, mine will be really brief. I just wanted to focus tonight on Main Street and some of the things that we're doing. I got some good news and bad news from Mayor, or Mayor Paltim Palfini. The new light pole made it all the way to Sacramento, and then it was discovered to have been damaged in the shipment. So they've got another one that's supposed to be...
You gotta just love this.
I'm sorry. No, no, no. The light pole that was in front of the, in front of your street.
In front of 480 Main Street. It's been absent for quite a while.
Yeah, so it's, it's in the process. I apologize, but it is going to be expedited. The next thing I want to talk about is something else on Main Street. If you want to pull up the picture of the digital sign. Nope, that's the clock. Keep going. There it is. Okay, that's the proposed digital clock. That's going to be coming before you at some point, next couple of months. The good news is, we got a $15,000 grant from Crystal Geyser, and the college has agreed to, well, in meeting with them, they're looking at the funds, but it looks like they're going to pay for the, the half of the balance, and we'll be paying for the other half of the balance. So it'll look, I think it's going to look really nice in front of City Hall to be able to advertise the events and things that are going on in City Hall. We're also in negotiations and discussions with the company that is looking at doing another digital billboard and putting it over off of the corner of College and the Boulevard there. So, so get a lot of traffic on that, on the Boulevard there. We're right before College. And just for everybody's, these new digital signs now have individual, is it... Mayor, you probably know this better than I do. Is it diodes, whatever, the little LED?
Yeah, light emitting diodes.
There we go.
Generally, organic light emitting diodes or OLEDs is the preferred technology nowadays.
Well, they have these now to where they dim at night, and then they shine down. So it makes it where it won't bother the residents. I go to the next picture with the clock. We got another, some good news. We got a, it looks like we're getting a $5,000 grant to go towards, it's a matching grant, to go replace the existing clock that we have. The existing clock was an $800 clock that had nothing but problems, was not properly sealed or made for the conditions that we have here in Weed. So that's a good thing. We're, we're going to be doing that. The next thing I just want to talk about real quickly is the arch. We're in the process of getting a solution, a long-term solution, rather than just slap some paint on it and wait for it to fade. I've got a designer that's looking at doing some stuff with more of an acrylic that could last for quite a while, and I'll be bringing forward some to the council and to the chamber, some designs on that, which will look really sharp when it's done. The flowers are growing very well, and they'll be put out. Huh? No, they're no longer down the hall. They're at the booster station now, so they've been...
Where are they?
They've been relocated to booster station, so. Yeah, so we're going to have 20 of the, and what we're trying to do, as I said before, just try to, and they're already growing like crazy. So hopefully, in about two and a half months, when they're put out on Main Street, they'll look even better. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that. We're all working on doing whatever we can to beautify Main Street. We've also talked to a few people about possibly doing some mural art on some of the buildings down there with the permission of the owners. I think that would look really nice down there, too. So anyway, we're just doing everything in to beautify Main Street.
Do we have a cost on those, on... Do we have a cost on those, on the signs, though?
Yeah, the sign itself is about, the, the cost on that one is $69,000, but the $15,000 from the Crystal Geyser grant, and it's going to be about $27,000 apiece, which in today's world is...
Twenty, $27,000 for us and then 27 for the college.
For the college, yes.
But that's just for one, right?
Just for that sign there, yes.
And then if we do another, then it's...
Yeah, well, if it, the one on the Boulevard would probably be a two-sided sign, so you'd probably add about another 30 to it, so, but we may be getting a substantial break on that if the gentleman that's doing the, from Legacy Signs is able to put up a digital billboard somewhere here, he can work us a deal while the crews are doing that to do something else for us, so it'd be substantially less probably, so, yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I think it'd be a great plus. I'd also like to figure out, you know, Mr., the light police here, that as I'm going up College Avenue, there's like 10 lights on College Avenue. Seven of those are not burning. And I would suspect that we need to figure out a way to kind of tie a yellow ribbon around, around them. So that, I mean, his crew can't see that in the day certainly, but...
Do those belong to PP&amp;L? Because my light in my front yard belongs to PP&amp;L.
They all belong to PP&amp;L, and we pay per light, so whether those are burning or not burning, we still have a light bill. Am I still correct on that?
Yes, you are. Anybody can turn those in to the Pacific Power Company on their website. You get the pole number, you put it in, or if you want to get the pole numbers, I can, I can call and put them in. All you got to do is go to their website and say...
Each pole has a number?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And then, I mean, you could, you could report them yourself or, or get the numbers and I'll report them.
Well, I go up there every day. I mean, it's, it's not a big deal, I just didn't want to step on somebody's toes.
Yeah, no, no, you go right to the website and report those.
Okay.
And, and just one other quick thing, as I shared with my Friday reports, we are also in the process of revamping our website, and the company that we're going to be bringing forward also has an app that does push notifications, not only for emergencies, but for community events. So like with the Suns deal and these things that can push these up to where you need, you want tickets, you want to do this, got the high school basketball game, the college basket, you know, those type of things. So, it's not a social media site, it's just a notification, push notification site for events and emergency stuff.
And we can do that off our website, or?
Yeah, well, what will happen is, once we update our website, this is totally different from the sign. If we update something on our website, it'll automatically push it to the app, so, yeah. So, I'm looking forward to that, too, because I think that'll be helpful for our citizens, too, because having that app there to be able to, to, you know, get those notifications of what's going on in our community is important as well, so...
Yeah, because we're...
We don't have a newspaper.
Yeah, and we're just, and we get disconnected and there's no reason. I mean, there's plenty of reasons, but we can at least alleviate it.
Yeah, and not everybody's on social media either, so, and, but you can have an app and not be on social media, so that's what we're looking at, so.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, well, that is the end of staff reports. We will now adjourn to closed session.
Yes, and we will be considering a real property negotiator, conference with a real property negotiator.
Okay.
All right.
We don't really, but...
See, no objections?
See, no objections. We will adjourn.
To closed session. I always wanted to use that narrative of the balls. Whoops, I shouldn't say it.